In public session, I want to make a quick announcement that Town Manager's Office wanted me to make, which is that Swanton Street is going to be closed, starting, or the access all the way through Swanton Street is going to be closed June 14th. More information will come out, but the bottom line is that to access the transfer station, you need to come to Swanton Street from Washington Street. And there's a map posted at the Select Board site, so it's the minutes put that in. And I don't think anyone is here for public comment, although I remember hearing from a couple of people that they might be. I didn't see anyone. So with that, we should go to the first business item, which is the Verizon Renewal Cable TV License.
Susan, before we get there, I'd like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion to reorganize at this time.
I would like to note that that's unorthodox and it's not on the agenda. Seems very strange and uncalled for. I don't know what the crisis is, but if if there's a sense of the board that we need to do that, I guess that's, I guess that's, I will entertain that motion if there's a second.
Second.
So what, I don't understand what's, why, why would we do this?
Well, I asked Susan to put it on the agenda and she refused to do so.
I put it on the Wednesday agenda when we would have time to talk about it and try to understand what's, what the situation is and what the problem is and why we should do this weird thing. But, and we don't have time now, you know, we have less than 30 minutes until town meeting starts, so.
Sure, I mean, I can be brief. My intentions and why I'm to do this, but you know, I think it's important that we do this now before we go any further with any form of meeting or discuss any, anything before the board. So if I may be heard, Susan.
You may.
Thank you. This is nothing personally against you, Susan, or my colleagues on the board, but this has been quite an experience these last six weeks. I just want to remind everyone that the board is made up of five individuals that must work in concert with no one voice greater than the rest of us. I feel we've lost that perspective. I'm deeply troubled by the direction this board is heading, and I feel reorganization is necessary to protect the institution, do what's in the best interest of the town. I'm troubled by the lack of transparency that this board currently suffers. I now know there are members on this board who have been privy to material information and have intentionally not shared that knowledge with other members, including myself. In my opinion, this culture of silence and loss of perspective that we are a collective body has spilled over to some of those who are appointed to assist this board, and I find this very troubling. Lack of horizontal communication amongst his members in this board is a real serious issue that must be addressed immediately. This lack of deliberations and discussions during these meetings speaks to this disconnect. Currently, this is not a board that strives to include everyone and empower each member with the knowledge to deliberate and make an informed vote, where I fear it may be the opposite. What I've seen, heard, and read rises to a level of dysfunction that requires a step back and a reevaluation of how we conduct business and operate as a body. I don't believe we got to this point overnight. I think it has been building for some time, but as an outsider, I bring a unique perspective. Now, I can see the current climate that you have all been operating in and how it is paralyzing this board. As a new member, I have not been complicit in this way of operations, so I have a clear vision and perspective. With this clarity, I think I could put this in the proper safeguards and measures in place to turn the situation around. I want staff and appointed officials accountable to make sure we are all on equal footing. I also think an outsider can help mediate relationships that could use some fostering for the greater good of this town. This is why I think we need to reorganize and give an outsider like myself a chance to lead. We must get our house in order, and I think I'm the best person to come up with a plan, given this clarity and perspective to do it. If we wait to fix this, then only, then I only become complicit in what's going on, we lose this perspective. Therefore, I request that you support my motion to reorganize, and I hope a colleague will nominate me to be chairperson and Amy Shapiro, vice chairwoman. Thank you.
So, I mean, I don't understand you, what are, can you give some examples of the lack of transparency? And I mean, that's a lot of accusations. We've had a chair for six weeks. This is very, very unorthodox and like without some examples, it's hard to tell like why we would say that over the last six weeks the board hasn't been functioning well.
Yeah, I mean, I've asked for certain information from Town Council, from Susan to get up to speed, and I haven't received that information. There's other information that was withheld from me that, you know, I certainly can't discuss in this public setting, but there's, there's information out there that, you know, certainly was held from me when I started in this role, that I think Susan knows that she's withheld from me. So, you know, and I think in other respects, there are conversations happening, you know, that things we need to discuss as a board that necessarily aren't being discussed. And it's just a problem. And I think, you know, we need to put in some safeguards and reevaluate and take a step back and get everything in order first before we conduct any further business.
Again, that's, there's no specifics there. So, I mean, I could say just whatever I want and not put any examples. I think it's, it's very initial. And honestly, I mean, I don't understand, I still don't understand why, because none of those are specifics of what's going on. I find it very troubling that, I'll be honest, I find it very troubling that a woman who, you know, it's only the second woman to have been chair of this board in 100 years, that woman have been allowed to vote, and she's only allowed to have six weeks, most of that time being meetings prior to town meeting when we are very crunched on time. So it's not our regular meetings. And to do this without having any sort of actual examples, and to say that only you are able to fix this, I mean, that's a, I've heard Trump say that, and I'm not saying that you're like Trump, but that's the kind of language that is divisive, and that I think that this board is better and that we should have specific examples. And honestly, I think we should give the chair time to, to be chair.
So certainly, I can certainly provide specific examples, but I don't think Susan wants me to do that at this point in time.
I can, I can provide some as well, Rich. I mean, one of the things that a lot of us have been talking about is just the speed at which very complicated contracts and information are coming before us. And I think we've all been saying at the past several meetings that it's, we're on overload and feeling like we can't absorb this information. And there's an anxiety with a lot of us that it's, that we're, there are bad outcomes for the town. And, you know, it's, it's on our shoulders to be able to, you know, even this, how packed the agenda is tonight. I mean, I said it last meeting, the meeting before, these meetings before town meeting are, you know, typically for kind of cleanup stuff, not, you know, substantive, you know, heavy duty contracts. And I get that sometimes we need to, there's time sensitive issues, but it seems like there's, there's a lot that is just coming at us all the time without, you know, an opportunity, you know, for, for us to respond. So, you know, I, you know, I nominate, you know, Rich for chair. And again, it's, 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 you know, nothing against, you know, Susan or you, Mariano, I just think that even the kind of where we are with town meeting and how difficult it's been, you know, I think it's, we need a new path forward to kind of get us back to where we used to be. I mean, you know, when I first came on the board, I mean, it's, you know, things were very consistent and very disciplined and, you know, very collaborative. And it just seems for some reason that we, we've gotten away from that. So, you know, I moved that we nominate, you know, Rich Mucci, you know, to chair and Amy Shapiro as vice chair. We can take those as, as they come.
I mean, I just disagree that that's something that's happened over the last six weeks. I mean, the, I know you're referring to the Waterfield LDA, and that's something that we didn't see previous to Susan being chair. So it's not something that is because of Susan being chair that is a problem.
So. Just sorry, just to be clear, Mariano, I'm not referring to the Waterfield LDA, my, my discussion. No, sorry, Amy.
That's okay. So I can speak to my time, my last two years as a woman on this board. And so this has been, you know, I got into this, I think you all knew this, and I think I've shared this with most of you, if not all of you, my thoughts on this. I got into this select board position because I care about this town and I wanted to help. And for the last two years, I felt completely useless because I don't have the same amount of information that everyone else has. And this board has become five individual people with different agendas, and I'm including myself in that, but five individual people in the select board is supposed to be a body of government that, that works for the town. And we have, we've lost our way, in my opinion. And I've been on this board for two years. And okay, so it hasn't just been six weeks, but, you know, Susan's been vice chair for a year and six weeks. And I, I, you know, I just, I just feel like this board is a 180. And it's not a person, it's not about the people, it's about the way that we're doing the work. And we're not being effective, we're not being, we're not making the right decisions. And I've sat for two years thinking, you know, that I just feel pretty useless because by the time we get to a select board meeting and we have to go to something to vote, the decision has been made. I know, and people have said, no, that's not happening. I know there are conversations happening outside, and I'm not privy to that information. And so I have been completely unprepared for two years. And I, I, you know, I've got one more year on my term, and I'm, I want this to work, and I want us to be able to address the situations that come up for the town and be effective and be leaders. And we're not that, we're not there right now. And so in my opinion, I don't, listen, Rich has a clear, you know, he, he's new to this. So he's got a fresh perspective that none of the rest of the four of us have, because we've been on this board for a long time. And we need, we need a 180. We need change. We need to flip it on its head, and we need to be more accountable. We need to be making each other accountable. We need to be more transparent. We need to, everyone needs to have the same amount of knowledge on everything we're talking about as the other person sitting next to them. And I just don't think we're there right now. So that's my concern. It's been my concern for two years. I've expressed it to many of you. And I just feel like if we're going to do the things for this town that we need to do, it's really important time in our town, we have to make a change. And if this change, you know, Rich is willing to do this, and that's great. And if this is the change, and it works, great. If it doesn't, we, we, you know, we look at it in a year, but we just, we have, we can't go on status quo anymore, in my opinion.
I mean, we made the change six weeks ago. I don't know why we wouldn't give that a year. I, I, I mean, you're saying, well, if Rich doesn't work, we'll look at it again in a year? No, if Rich, I mean, why would we give Rich a year, but we're only giving Susan six weeks?
Because she, Mariano, she's gonna, Susan, I don't like to speak about you like you're not here. Susan has been in, in a leadership position on this board for a year and six months. She was vice chair for a year. So she's, she's, you know, she's been involved in some of these conversations I'm talking about. And I think that we need to, so we all have, but I think we need to, we need to do something drastic.
I mean, I wasn't.
Something drastic.
I wasn't chair or vice chair for the past year, and I felt like I was informed without any issues. So I don't know, that's why I don't understand.
But I'm not, I wasn't.
I don't understand what anybody's saying about not being informed, because I was not in a leadership position for the last year. And Amy, you know that six weeks ago, I talked to you and I said, if you want to be vice chair, you're vice chair. I didn't want this. Okay. This is not for me. Rich, you want to be vice chair? That's fine. You can be vice chair. I don't need to be vice chair. But I think it is right now. But I, but I do not agree with not giving Susan the time to have regular meetings, not just before town meeting, and to fix, yeah, I agree, the last year was really tough, but I was able to get information. And I think that Susan has done really well over the last six weeks, and I think we need to give her a chance. But I'm happy, Rich, if you want to be vice chair right now. Or Amy, if you want to be vice chair right now, either one, that's fine. But I, I think it's, it's uncalled for, and honestly, I'm, I don't buy it. I don't buy all the excuses without specifics.
Like I said, I'm happy to give specifics, but I don't think Susan or this wants me to get into the specifics.
And Rich, since this is kind of turning into me withholding information, you asked a long list of questions, you asked for a lengthy amount of material, we tried to get it to you, I've called you. There are lots of things on the website. When I first stepped on the board, I read up on the things that the previous board had done, like, have you read the housing production plan? Have you looked at all of the materials for the Waterfield Lot, RFP and RFQ? I mean, there's, there's a whole history there. And I looked at the zoning bylaw, and I talked to people because I was trying to understand what was going on with the master plan. You know, a lot of things that are out there that you, you just have to read. And, you know, I wish you had said something more, like more specific. And I would have, you know, we do have, we need, one of the things we wanted to fix and that, you know, we have a new policy on is onboarding. And we, you know, I know that that needs to be better. And I would be committed to working on that. I'm also committed on having a better approach towards collective bargaining so that we have more board meetings when that's going on, more, you know, executive sessions, so we stay in touch with that. I have some ideas about ways that this could function better, and I just haven't had a chance to do that yet because it's been sort of carrying through the initiatives that we needed to do for, for town meeting.
I mean, again, Susan, I appreciate that. But I, I think, to Amy's point, I think we need a drastic turn. And as I explained to you, you know, I, you know, I'm not emotionally involved in this yet. I haven't been living it. And so I think, you know, my perspective is the best one, being new to the board, to kind of get us out from this rut we're in.
I see that the Town Council has his hand up.
Oh, yep.
I, I'm sorry to interject. I have nothing at all on the substance of this conversation. However, I do think it's important for me as a, as representing the town to point out that this was not noticed on your agenda. So if you want to take this up, it really ought to be on your agenda at a future meeting. It sounds like it's already on the Wednesday agenda, so I don't think it's being withheld from a future agenda. I recommend certainly full discussion of any issues you need to have. But for procedural clarity, it is, it would not be appropriate, in my view, and this is just my recommendation, you're free to take it or ignore it, that to do this without having it properly noticed on a meeting agenda.
So, I mean, I can appreciate that, but I think this is an internal board organization matter that doesn't involve the public. It's, it's being discussed at a public setting, so I don't think any comments from the public would be warranted on this topic anyways. So I don't think notice would be appropriate.
Mr. Mucci, I respectfully disagree. The open meeting law does not distinguish between matters that are being discussed with the public getting to weigh in and the public not getting to weigh in. It's about fair notice and deliberation in public. That is the requirement of the open meeting law, in my opinion, as I read the statute and as I have been trained in it for the past decade. That's, again, my recommendation. The board is free to do what it needs to do. The chair is in control of the meeting, but I don't believe that this was an appropriate item because it was not on the agenda as a legal matter.
So according just to the Attorney General guidance, you know, the, the agenda should set out any information that the board, any agenda items that the board, that the chair reasonably thinks will be brought to the floor that day. So, you know, certainly there's some wiggle room there, and, you know, I think an issue like this can certainly pass muster without being on the agenda, especially.
Mr. Mucci, sorry, go ahead. I don't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead, please. Mr. Mucci, again, I respectfully disagree. Having been Town Council in three different towns for half a decade and practicing in this area for 12 years, that is not the purpose of what the reasonably anticipate clause is. It's for emergencies. There are plenty of decisions from the Attorney General's office. I am not saying you cannot have this decision or this discussion. I'm suggesting that you need 48 hours' notice in appropriate open meeting law procedure. Again, this is a legal recommendation. I can only recommend you all decide what to do.
So as the chair, I would like to interpret this motion and this discussion as placing this reorganization on the agenda for the meeting on Wednesday, May 19.
And I think Mike's motion needs a second to go forward if I'm, if I know where we're at, so.
Okay.
Well, I guess you'll be starting your tenure with a strange open meeting law violation, which is not good for the town. But I'm trying, I'm trying to do what you guys, what the sense of the whole board is.
Well, if it is on the agenda for Wednesday, can we delay the vote till Wednesday and do it the way that, you know, everyone feels comfortable with? Rich, are you, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
I mean, I don't see this as an open meeting law violation. With all due respect to Mina, I just don't. So.
I mean, I think that if, if it was requested to be on the agenda for this meeting, you know, you know, I don't know, seems, seems like it's time to move it forward. You know, we can always ratify it on Wednesday and to cure it.
So there's a motion and a second. Is it a motion for both nominations? I guess that's the way you couched it. So roll call vote, Mariano.
I mean, it's clear that, you know, we don't want to follow Town Council's advice. We want to, you know, we're possibly violating the law. It's clear that this is not for the purposes of the betterment of the town. So I definitely vote no.
So let me, let me just say this. So in the spirit of what I just said, as I spoke from my heart, and I, Susan, I've, I've said this to you, I said it to all of you, in the spirit of doing what's right and doing what's right for the town, let's, I would ask that we vote on this on Wednesday. And we, since it's on the agenda, it's the, I think it should be the first thing we talk about on Wednesday.
Do we have a meeting on Wednesday? Was it noticed out properly? I mean, I haven't seen anything that's come through. The last I saw, it wasn't noticed on the, on the town calendar.
Okay, if that's, if that's the pleasure of the board, I'll, yeah, I'll withdraw my motion then, and we can continue as long as it's the first item on the agenda on Wednesday.
I promise it will be the first item on the agenda. So do we, do we need to vote on the Horizon contract? Lisa?
Yes.
I guess we, we already voted in executive session. We would just ratify that. I'm sorry, I just been distracted here. I'm going to say we voted in an executive session. Because town meeting is starting. And so I want to be sure that we, is there anything we need to do with respect to any of the motions that are going to be heard? Article 24, do we need to change that?
So the only thing that I, I would ask is that we indefinitely postpone Article 8. We have a very busy night tonight, and I'm just concerned of where town meeting is. I don't think that if we pick it up, I think we can pick it back up in the fall. And if we have our existing fee structure in place, it really, you know, won't, won't impact us very much. It's just, I think town meeting is tired. I think, you know, battling this out, I already have been getting a lot of questions. I know Town Council's been getting a lot of questions about it, and it seems like town meeting going till Thursday would be not a good outcome, you know, for us. So, you know, it's, you know, the Sustainability Director was funded. We've got our, our fee structure that we'll continue to tinker with to get it in place for the building permit fee, and we can even address that on Wednesday if we don't have time now. But that's the only thing that I would ask is that we, we indefinitely postpone Article 8. I don't know what anybody else thinks.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine with me. I mean, it doesn't sound like it's, you know, it's going well. And then town meeting seems to be, you know, this spring seems to be, I think it's a good move, given the climate that we have at town meeting right now. So, I mean, I'll second that motion if you've made one, Mike.
Yeah.
I'm confused. I thought this was an important thing to do, to have the, the bylaw in place, but I understand that it has become very confused in the minds of town meeting. And it was also something that we didn't really discuss as a board terribly well, leading up to putting it on the agenda, or putting it on the warrant or afterwards. Even the discussion we had previously that was related to it, the building permit fee was a little confused. So, yeah, I think I support. Amy, any thoughts?
Yeah, likewise. Yeah, I think that's right. I think, I think it's, it's become a hot topic or a hot button issue. And I think for the way the town meeting is going, I think it's something that we can pause.
Mariano, any thoughts?
Yeah, no, I mean, it's something that this board doesn't drive, right? It was put on the agenda by one member of the board. And we, so if, if Mike wants to remove it, he was the one putting it on the agenda in the first place, then I'm, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
So a roll call vote? Amy?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So that brings us to the, the building permit fee.
Can, can we pick that up another? I mean, we've got like one minute.
That's true.
And, you know, I think we weren't looking to do it until July 1st anyway, so.
All right.
So we've.
As long as Mina can, can make it, and we, we can, you know, have a good discussion of, and understand how we should structure it.
Yeah, and I, and I connected with Mina on Friday and with, with Mark, so I think we've got kind of a plan to move forward on it.
Okay.
So, but I think everybody's got to get, get moving here. I don't want anybody to feel, you know, rushed again on it. I think it was just a little bit confusing just how we voted it, you know?
Okay, okay. And then when we're in town meeting, Lisa and Mark, I understand you're working on some changes to Article 24, which is the COVID expenses. So can, can you present all that when, when it comes time?
Yes, yeah, we're, we're moving the motions for building and for the schools, and we're reducing the Board of Health request to 100,000.
Okay. I think everything else we can defer.
Susan, can you?
I move that we.
Sorry, Mariano, could you just let Heather know about the Article 8?
I will do that, Mike, right now.
Oh, okay, someone.
Yep, I think Mark was going to do the send, send the emails. So thank you, Mark.
Yeah, my, my internet is going in and out. I was just going to mention quickly on Article 24, Lisa and I are recommending with three motions to fund COVID expenses, we, on the Board of Health, which is motion one, we were going to reduce it to $100,000, and we were going to, going to eliminate basically motions. And we were going to, going to eliminate basically motions two and three, which is the DPW for motion two and the Building Department for motion three. So we were going to change motion one to $100,000. That's reducing it from 240,000.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for spelling that out. So I guess.
Yeah, I move that we recess to the floor of town meeting to adjourn at the same time as town meeting adjourned.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. See you on the other side.